Put board, just put your name in there to prove you were here. So this is the February 22nd, 2019 Nantucket zoning board of appeals work session number two, I mean to do with side crossing, I'll say, and the side crossing is 4D. So I'm gonna put it over to Ed.
Great. And do you think introductions are necessary?
Everybody's been here enough that everybody knows each other. Does anybody not know everybody? We're good.
Great. Okay, this is a follow-up to our meeting on February 4th. In the interim, Cliff was able to meet with, directly with the development team. He's gonna provide a brief summary of that. The primary purpose of this meeting, hopefully, is to get to a plan that people are satisfied with, if not at 100% agreement by each party. And we'll one, take a look at what you feel the pluses and or minuses of the revised plan that the applicant submitted. And I think we should ask our design advisor to sort of lead off, one, give a summary of that meeting, and then his perception of how the, his perspective on the changes in the plan.
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, I'm Cliff Omer, and I'll start with, I don't have any other sketches. I think the idea was that the developer would go work on some schemes that would perhaps incorporate some of the ideas from those sketches we talked about on the 4th. And that is what happened. A quick report on what happened after that on the 7th, so later that same week, I met with the team at my office in Davis Square, Somerville, and we met for about an hour and a half. We didn't pull out trace and markers, it wasn't really a charrette kind of session. I think it was mainly, I thought the most substantive, substantive part of it for me was discussing why the ideas behind some of the sketches I did and why those were, I thought, important elements. I think specifically maybe the part about the integration, a more seamless integration of the different housing types in the site. And I think I clarified that point at the meeting with the development team, and I'm not gonna run through all of it again, but what the point, the main point I was trying to make is it's not, it's about all kinds of integration. If the site plan is really well-integrating, all the different housing types, I think it's a model for longer-term sustainability on the site, both through, you know, being aesthetically pleasing, but really encouraging people to interact across the entire width of the site more successfully. So it's both a social idea and a physical setting kind of idea. We talked about a number of ideas that I think we'll probably hear more about today. I think I spent some time explaining why the kinds of modules I showed had, were very simple to deal with as far as having space that's dedicated to single units without going through a lot of gymnastics to make that happen. We, again, we talked about very sort of general ideas of what led to those schemes that I did. At the end of that, we talked a bit about the, what is often the case when talking about density, that it's kind of a hard thing to wrap your arms around. There's no, there's no absolute value of one density equals one kind of experience or has one kind of impact. So I suggested to the developers that it would be helpful, you know, in a project with this kind of density and this kind of setting, to be able to really have some more tangible metrics to discuss it. And I made a, just, these weren't specific charges, that's really not my role, but I suggested, you know, figure ground studies that, where you can get very quick graphic reading of physical density of spaces, other ways of measuring the impact that kind of move more over into the intensity of use side of density are, how are the parking spaces working, how many gallons of water are consumed every year there, how do you take into account the fact that many of the residents are targeted to be year-round residents and others are not? And so what does a kind of a year-long graph look like of the kind of intensity of use of the site? And again, I only suggested that as a way of kind of getting through the discussion about density. My role, I think you all know, is probably more on the physical setting side of it, but I do know that there are certain kind of tipping points that you hit where you start to really create some issues if you're really trying to overpack a site. A couple of thoughts, just to, I wanted to make a few comments on the plan that's now in front of all of us, but I wanted to start with just a very quick, you're fine there, you're, I think. This was the plan that I first reviewed, which is already a revised plan from the original submission. And the, I think I've said it enough times a couple of weeks ago when I was here, that what I found really troubling about the site was a very, very clear division between the single-family homes and then the condominium piece. Many of the people who would come into the development to go to their single-family homes wouldn't even have, they would have no contact at all with that back half of the site. So that, to me, was a red flag for a lot of reasons that I've already said. I don't think it in any way promotes social integration of the site, and it's certainly not physically well-integrated, kind of seamless physical connection between the areas. So that was the starting point of doing those sketches. So every one of those sketches that I did, and presented back here on the 4th, were trying to address that issue of creating a more integrated site throughout the entire depth of the site. And we could switch to the current scheme. And then I'll just make some comments. Again, I didn't do any more sketches, but I do have a number of reactions to this. I think the, and then some suggestions of how to further study it. I think, from my perspective, I think there's been clearly a much, what we see now, the other scheme, as I said, you could come into the site here and go out, never have any contact with the rest of that. At this point, with this plan, everybody who comes in at this place goes, yeah, that's the one-way in. These are one-way circulation around this way. This piece is two-way, but virtually every person who comes into that site is going to experience a full depth of the site. And I think that is setting the table for having a site that could be very well-integrated and function really well, and I think be a very inviting site. So for me, the, having a central organizing element by forcing the issue of physically moving people throughout the entire site, it sets the table, I think, for a well-working, well-functioning development. And at this point, I've seen a lot of developments on Nantucket, and I think the ones that work the best, at least from my perspective, are ones that really promote a very walkable, coherent setting. And again, that's, I'm not talking about density now, I'm just talking about the experience of being in that site and enjoying that experience. So from that perspective, I think adopting a plan that really puts a big step forward towards getting people moving throughout the entire site is a really strong move in the right direction. And I think just from classic site planning principles, you need large-scale, with this many units, you need at least one large-scale organizing element. And I think the placement of the community center in the middle of shared green space, sidewalks on both sides of the street, I, I'm, I think the one-way circulation and mixing up the edge, the edge condition along the street, I think works very well, setting in the parking. I think these are all very positive moves from my perspective. There are many issues I can't, I can't speak of authoritatively, but I think they work well if they're feasible. You know, I do think, and I talked about that last week, well, it wasn't last week, it was the 4th, talked about taking advantage of that easement space, you know, programming that space, it kind of gives you a boost of usable outdoor space that everybody can enjoy, I think is a good thing. Yet again, I don't know the legal or physical constraints, and maybe I'm paving over that, but it certainly isn't unusual to pave over easements. For me, the, this plan still needs work, though. And the, for me, the biggest issue, the biggest single issue, and then there are some other smaller issues, more finer grade issues, is while we still, as I said, we're bringing everybody in and through the site along a similar path, we still have a very distinctive region of the site that is very different from anywhere else. And on a kind of experiential level, just a physical walking through the site level, I think it's a problem because of loss of continuity of the street facade. So the, I think what's really wonderful about a one-sided facade like, or a street section like this is the experience in all the building facades having similar sizes, all pulled together with, with the common sidewalk treatment, street trees, et cetera. And it's really a big break in that. So I think it's a real lost opportunity, at the very least, to break this kind of regular texture that you have going throughout the site, breaking it with a very different kind of housing type there, for me, isn't working. So, and then, of course, once you're inside with the loop, and by the way, I do, I do think that it's a good move to have, to have asymmetrical access, you know, the smaller sites on the side and a bigger site to work with over here, I think that works really well. It makes it much easier to lay it out, I think. But my, so my initial very quick thought, and again, I haven't done any other sketches myself, is I think you really need to regularize the treatment along the street of the building scale. And I think a really, another positive addition to this plan, or difference between this, is an introduction of a new housing type, which I think is a very strong element that could be used in several ways on this site. I don't think there are any drawings of the duplex homes at this point, no, there aren't. So, but the idea of introducing larger lots and doing duplexes on those lots, I think, will really, really help on mixing up scale in the site. And for example, I could easily imagine these being duplexes along there because the size of the duplexes is probably not much different.
Where were you pointing, Cliff?
I'm sorry, along the street edge.
Yeah.
I think having, again, that, I think that serves the purpose of a better integration of a condominium component into the neighborhood. And that's, I think that's maybe, that's what we're talking about. I think this, this drawing is starting to look like a neighborhood. And so then you need to go down to the next layer, and that's that continuity and coherence thing that I'm talking about. So my, my recommendation at this point to further study this is to look, I think the developer should look at a number of different options for this zone in this area. My initial thoughts are, I already said it, is coherence of the street frontage. I think that will make a huge difference, if you even imagine that same pattern across this side. I think it makes a big difference. One, I think, thing that worked successfully in a lot of developments here on Nantucket are little secondary paths that go off of the primary circulation path with their own individualized way of dealing with parking around the building. And in some developments I've looked at, the buildings are actually quite close to each other, but they're distinct buildings, they're one- and two-family homes with parking kind of wrapping or engaging the housing in a different way from a centralized parking lot. So when I talk about studying that, that district, which is now, I think, a well-defined district in the plan, it would include, I think, looking at more local examples of the way that's been done. And I think a key element in all of the ones I've seen that have little side pocket areas, these, the buildings aren't this big. So I think the second suggestion I make that I would include in studying this zone is breaking up the size of these buildings. I think it helps relate a crossover to sections. And I think, again, it, it just weaves together the fabric of the whole site. Going back to that very first diagram, that, that kind of stark difference between pieces, I think the more that that can be alleviated, the more potential for success of the development. A couple other comments I have from having looked, looked at the drawings, the, I think in the package, there were, on the last page of the package, there were a number of kind of self-imposed studies that the developers said, we want to look at these things. I think those are, they're all good, they're all good ideas that need to be looked at that will help flesh out the plan. Again, they, you know, they say further development, side-by-side duplex plans, I would take that further and look at opportunities for citing those duplexes in, not just along places where you might have a little more density, for example, along there, but also kind of awkward, some of the more awkward sites could be turned into duplex sites instead of single-family home sites, so that you can kind of articulate or punctuate, punctuate the, the street fabric with a, with a duplex type, which is another reason I'm really happy about seeing that is, it gives a, it's more, you know, more tools in the toolbox, basically, to make a really nice street presence. Other suggestions, and I may, I may, and I don't know if they did it, again, for me, one of the hardest things is that discussion about density. Probably all of you remember that probably the biggest difference between the sketches that I was doing and the sketches that we're seeing here is there are, where I was working with modules, where each module, their 18-foot module was one unit, many if not all of these modules, I think, are two units. So that's where you cross over into that discussion about intensity. The model, those sketches I did, I felt comfortable, to me, I don't know everything about density, but they were comfortable to me, so I'm not convinced at this point that this site is not overpacked. I know it can work at the lower density I showed, I'm not convinced yet that it works here. A suggestion that I had made before was, and they do say that, things they need to study are the real, much finer-grained studies on how the parking works around those homes. You know, many of these homes are five-bedroom homes, and how parking will work in that situation, I think, is part of that timeline. I was talking about what is it like in the middle of summer when there are a lot of people living on this site, obviously many, many more than February, and kind of graphing out how that actually works, I think is a really important tool that, that the board should ask for, so that they can really study this. Other suggestions, and now I think that if this organizational idea is working from the board's perspective, the next level of study that really helps understand it from an experiential perspective is 3D modeling of the buildings. We usually use SketchUp in our work, that really allows you, you know, to properly design the street, the setbacks from the street, how often do you need street trees, really getting down to the detailed study of what the street is, you know, so street sections, materials of the sidewalks, are they contrasting with the street, you know, many things that really help to, help you understand the real quality of the experience. Let's see, what else? I think that's, that's about it, on my initial look at this, is, again, compared to the first diagram, we now know that people are going to experience a full site, but I think, I would, I think the board should think about other options, the developer and the board think about other options for this area that kind of help, help create a more coherent texture across the entire site.
Great, Cliff, thank you. I, I think the order that makes sense to get feedback would be go to the public, i.e. not the board, not the applicant, then go to the board and perhaps the applicant respond. So we're open for feedback in terms of pluses, minuses, what you like, what you think could be improved on the revised site.
Could I get a clarification just from Cliff?
Sure.
Cliff, you mentioned the 18-foot module, and, you know, density obviously is not just a function of the number of units, but the size of the unit. So I, I think what I got from this is you were saying that these are larger modules, and therefore the density, it seems denser. But did you, is that correct, and did you compare how many modules were 18 versus this?
No, it, what, sorry, but what I was trying to say is that where I would show an 18-foot wide module, it would only be one unit. Their module that, I'm not sure it's 18 feet or whatever their module size is, they're showing two units, so they have stacks of units within their modules.
Gotcha, okay.
So it's basically double the number of units?
Well, just to clarify, it's, it's a two- or a three-bedroom unit, and a studio or a one-bedroom in that two-bedroom configuration. So it's double the number of units, they're not twice, they're not, they're not, presumably yours were, your, your 18-foot modules were two- or three-bedroomed.
Correct, that's exactly right.
So we aren't doubling that, but we are adding additional units, it's a small.
That's right.
And, and the one-bedroom is always associated with a three-bedroom, whereas a studio is always, always associated with a two-bedroom in terms of how they're stacked.
And then, just one other thing on that, just for information, I'm not trying to mess up here.
No, no, that's fine.
Or, or adding order here, but we have tried to work with the grading, so that the height of the building is within the 30-foot maximum, but that we get three living levels, which I think in, in what you were thinking of, that there are probably only two living levels.
Or potentially, no, there still could be like a bedroom up in the roof space.
Maybe even three, only for one, for one unit. And so we've got some where we've got some of the secondary bedrooms below grade, we've got some where there's a half a grade below for the smaller units in some of our building types. I know we haven't gotten into the building types in great detail, but we're trying to get more units in what appear to be, from a physical, visual standpoint, a similar volume to what I think was in yours, same footprint, same basic volume above grade, but two units as opposed to one.
Right, right. Well, which is why I said, to me, that, I mean, whether the condo, I mean, I, whether the condos are this big or not is a separate discussion, but the, what I was going to say is that, that you described it perfectly, and that, to me, that's why it crosses over into that intensity of use question.
Well, is there?
Okay. So then the other disappointing clarification is, in the, on the first page of the fourth paragraph, the first third of the sentence, it talks about the structures, and it talks about the heights being 32, 32 feet, 30 or 32 feet. When I originally, originally read it, I thought perhaps the single-family cottages kind of got mushed into that, and you were just talking about the duplexes and larger, but you are actually saying that the cottages would be as presently considered between 30 and 32 feet.
No, the cottage has changed from what it was, basically, I accept it.
This just refers to the condos.
And what is the height of the, expected height of the cottages?
I think it's, I think the highest, tallest condo is 28 feet. There was in the original, original submission, there was.
Cottage, cottage.
Yes, cottage, it's condo.
Okay, 'cause, 'cause the way the sentence reads, they are mixed, I wanted to get clarity.
Yeah, there were a couple of 30-footer types that have been eliminated from the cottages.
Right, the A-type.
The A-type, yeah.
So single families would be in the neighborhood of 28 feet?
Yeah.
Okay, thank, I just wanted to get some clarification. Thank you.
The floor is open.
I can, I spoke with Dawn, she's in a very sunny, warm place downtown, so she asked me to just step in, and we talked this morning, and I want to get some feedback on the plan for Dawn. Dawn, her goal was to represent the select board as a whole. So she said, the layout has been approved and it's moving in the right direction. She likes the, the better integration, duplexes and the buffer is a plus, the parking on the inside, the green split space, a plus, sewer force made, more room there, and just in general, she liked the better integration, it was moving in the right direction. However, she said that she would still like to see smaller buildings.
Smaller condos?
Yeah.
Okay.
She was trying to represent the board.
Ed?
Yes.
Can I go? Okay, so I'm actually here representing the HDC. My background in this area is subdivision development from natural site through governance models and management services turnkey. So maybe later I'll have some other comments, but with respect to the layout, I think the interesting thing here that came up from the sketches and is developed, is the circulation experience within the site. It actually models how the town was developed into the 27 proprietor's lots, where they were very standardized, much more so than your traditional fishing village in the northeast. And then where natural contours, like between the big jump between Union Street and Orange Street, you would follow a contour, and that would start to give you your curvature. So it was interesting to see that although this doesn't have those topographic changes, there is a sense of that, that gets picked up. I think in this area where you don't have the topographic contours to make it visually interesting, having this circulation model that goes all the way through does create a focal point that could be very useful, both in terms of everyday service and use, and also the aesthetic. It's gonna depend, I think the success of that is gonna depend on how it's actually finally finished with respect to hardscape and landscape. It could be open space, it could be mixed-use space, it could be, it's, it's gonna be a, there's gonna be a fine line, I would suggest, in the formula for success for that, because if it's a little bit too much of one or a little bit too little of the other, it's just not gonna be as successful, it's just gonna be this green space that's kind of separates things. And if, and if that's done right, that could be successful, but I just, I just want to suggest that there is, in the future, perhaps, a good amount of focus needs to go into the aesthetic and the functionality of that area. The other thing I just wanted to make, a couple of quick comments, is with respect to these types of subdivisions and communities, you've got typically four issues before you get into other, other types of issues, like, you know, homeowner involvement and collecting fees, there are parking, noise, noise isn't something we're dealing with, homeowner association would do that, you really can't rely on the town code, it doesn't deal with the common sense stuff of day-to-day noise in this level of density. And then the third and the fourth are parking and noise. So, and it looked to me, doing a quick count, you know, some napkin math, is that with respect to the, the large buildings that we're calling the condos, which I think we're kind of doing a disservice to ourselves and the dialogue generally in the public by referring to them as condos, I don't know if we can come up with a name for them, you know, they're not widgets, I don't know what they are, but when you refer to them as condos, condo is a form of ownership and it, it's, and it also kind of just puts a different slant on what the condos are. These are, a condo could be a.
Multi-family, multi-family.
Yeah, the, yeah, multi- Yeah, the, yeah, multi-family units, dwelling units, something along those lines, just because I think it, I just try to use, I'm not very successful at it, but I try to use words that are descriptive and the condo is not really a good descriptive unit for what those are. So I wanted to make that point. Along the lines of that point, it does look like, again, my napkin map, that your parking works out pretty well there. If every unit, if every bedroom were required to have a parking, a parking space you're short for, but you've got parking out on the street for overflow, so that's helpful. Parking in the front, I know you're not getting that level of granularity, but Cliff did mention some of this, these secondary and tertiary circulation roads. We've used those in a, in a community that's been around for nearly thirty-five years, thirty-five years now, and they're shell path roads, they can be other, different materials and be successful. But the key to their success is to have dwellings that are not, have a lot of density in terms of number of bedrooms, because you can't successfully put parking into those small areas, which is what they're designed to be, is kind of small offshoots, if you have large buildings and no place for people to park. So that would just be a, a follow-up on Cliff's comment, if I may. And then I think the only other side, the only thing that I would say at this point is with respect to the duplexes and their use, both at the front and around the, the community as opposed to a site, I mean, this is like a small community, is that the aesthetic is going to be terribly important, as is the parking for those, because they tend to be used in a different way than most single family homes or a multi-family home that has studios or two bedrooms in them. And then I think the last thing I would say is that the continuity, although they're different types of buildings, I think that your massing needs to be, I would suggest your massing of those structures, there needs to be a common vocabulary and I, and you, these, they've been before the HDC with previous drawings and there is a common vocabulary between the buildings. So as long as that continues, the fact that you've got a single family duplex and multi-family, as long as you're using common vocabularies in terms of the massings, the proportions, the use of additive massings, the uses of dormers, I, I think that that could be very successful, but I just want to caution you that, that it's an important part of the success. So that's what I have to offer, if that's helpful.
That's helpful.
So I don't have anything very professional to say, but, so I've been driving around a lot, not that I haven't seen these other places, Nasha, Quisit and like, but I think overall, my main concern is five thousand square feet for a four or five bedroom house is not enough property. You know, I, so I have ten thousand square feet, so I try and think of that, I've got a three bedroom, so let's say I had six people on, on ten thousand square feet, that would seem reasonable. You know, everybody still has elbow rooms, so I think in these kinds of situations, especially with, when the emphasis is on year-round population, you have to be thinking about the, I don't know if you call it psychological well-being, but you know, people's sense of space and independence from their neighbor, you know, where you're not just on top of each other. When you're in more of a seasonal situation, people are coming and going, most of the seasonal things here these days are all rentals anyway, so people are here for a week or two weeks or what have you, so they're like coming and going, right? So then that closeness isn't so much, doesn't become so much of an issue, but the majority of these lots, as I went around and looked anyway, no matter what size unit or house is on it, whether it's the type A, the red, the green, the blue, the stripe, they run about five thousand, they're five thousand square feet, maybe a wee, wee more. And there might be three, like my numbers could be wrong, there might be three six thousand square foot lots. But you know, when I, when I was driving around Nasha, Quisit there, you know, they have a, not only, you know, you have that sort of flow like this kind of thing and the varying house styles, but they also have varying lot sizes, right? So they have anywhere, I think they may only have two or three five thousand square foot, but they get into at least six to eight thousand square foot, you know, playing around in different areas, but there's enough room to sort of exist. And I, I went through Park Circle again, and that duplex situation, which I feel, fear would come up here with, it's only fifty-four hundred square feet, between the house and the driveways, there is maybe a two foot green space around the foundation of the house, but there's no place for kids to play. They're essentially going to be playing in the driveway, which in my way of thinking is sort of a dangerous thing to encourage kids to do. I know you've got the green space and things, but you know, older kids can get out and play, but a lot of your younger kids, parents like to try and keep close to the house and so, and I just noticed that a lot of the outdoor toys for young kids were like in the driveway and the gas drills are in the driveway and that, I'm not a city dweller, so you have to keep that in mind. But I just think that for long-term investment in purchasing a, a home that you plan on living in year-round, you need room for your kids to grow from youth to college and things like that. So there needs to be, I guess that's what I mean, like, it's, it's not just a set time, like, okay, here it is, everybody moves in and everybody stops aging at that moment. You know, families grow, they shrink, I think that's what the multi-units are for, right? Is for if people, you know, they had a big family and now they want to move into something smaller, they can, you know, trade up, trade over, move around. So I like to see it more as a dynamic living space, but I, I just think that every lot being fairly regular at five thousand two to five thousand ten square feet creates a lot of regularity in the lot, even with the variation that we try to apply to it. I liked what Cliff was saying about carrying this streetscape sort of around and maybe that would result in two of those multi, multi-unit buildings being changed out for more of the single family home kind of thing. You know, I'm not quite sure, but like you've got on the corner, you have a blue and a green, and it would seem like that would be a good single unit either for a five bedroom house or for like a duplex to go over there. And then where those duplexes are, maybe, you know, one of those buildings could go over in there, do you see what I mean? Because I think you've gotten it down to a nice point where you sort of have pieces you could move around, but I, I really do think that these lots need to have greater variety. And they don't have to go to ten and fifteen thousand square feet or something, but I do get concerned about the, the type of environment people end up living in when it's, everybody's cheap by jow. You know, it, it seems to not always create a friendly community.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Next.
I'll go if I can. It, it's much nicer to see a set of plans drawn out and with an engineering scale and everything on it, but looking at the numbers, it looks like we've actually gone up in number of dwellings, whether you want to call them multi-residential or single family homes, we've actually gone up a few.
And that's from a hundred to a hundred and four?
I'm, I'm just looking at, yeah, so we had fifty-two in the multi-residential and with thirty-six single family homes on the old set of plans from the package. And then this ship, this set is showing sixty multi-residential with thirty-six condos, not condos, sorry, uh, single family homes and eight duplexes. So we went up in density on the set of plans and it's disappointing to see there was no consideration to increasing the buffer size, as several people mentioned that at the last meeting.
Sorry. So I, my comments are sort of limited, you know, I don't, I don't know what the right density is. I'm sensitive to, you know, what Cliff talked about with in terms of intensity of use. The thing that I most am focused on is what Cliff described as a social integration of the site, and so I agree with this sense with some of what Campbell was saying there is I, I love, it feels very segregated still, and I think what is very successful, in my own opinion, about the beach bum development is the integration of the affordable units and the market units and driving through that neighborhood, you would have no idea which was which. And here it feels like there's separation where I think the intention should be more integration.
Even though some of the multiple units in the multi-family are market rate, it sort of gives you the feeling that, that this-
It just feels, yeah, to, to mix the elements up throughout the site, to me, would, would feel more successful.
I agree. I think I was a little disappointed at the, at the schematic of that area up there with the big blue buildings. I felt like it was, it didn't, it sort of took what I thought was the, what Cliff started as sort of a successful integration of smaller pieces of architecture and where the scale might be more appropriate for the size of the residential, the single family pieces. And they, I know that they're not, they're eighty-foot long buildings, they're not that dissimilar than four eighteen-foot units. They just have the sense of, there's just this block of big buildings and all these other little buildings and there, there's not enough integration. I did, and I like the idea of Cliff of creating the same sense of scale along the entire garden or the center of green space, just because I do think that that will be more successful when you're driving through, rather than rounding that corner and then also being seeing these large buildings, which I know to your point are the size of a, what we typically see as a single family house on Nantucket, but they're going to be significantly larger than any of the single family houses that you guys have here. So I think they're, hopefully there's a better way of, of dealing with that. And I do, I am sensitive to having four townhouses lined up right next to each other and having that look like a little cookie cutter development just happened on a one little strip in here and it, it would be better to integrate the housing types a little bit more throughout the development, from an aesthetic perspective. But, you know, oh, and did we get clarification if we can actually park on that easement?
Park in or pave on?
Yeah. The easement.
We actually got a memo from ours or consultant, which we'll submit to you guys.
Then that you could. Okay. I don't know, is it possible to break up this big area with like some cul-de-sacs or something that makes it a little bit more interesting? You know, just this, rather than having this big rectangle of buildings or?
Yeah, it felt to me like the multi-family dwelling, it just got, it moved.
Yeah, moved to the top.
This, I mean, I hate to say it, but it seems to me to be a regurgitation of the same plan we've been looking at for a long time. I didn't have this quiet, quiet, positive feeling as Cliff did. I, I was encouraged by the new housing type that you acknowledged in the duplex area, but the multi-family area still is very problematic for me. I don't think it's integrated well. I, I think per Cliff's comments, I think it could be, but again, I think the buildings have to change. They, they, I think they have to be radically different. I was also a little taken aback that there were more units versus less. There were, I think, four fewer bedrooms, so it didn't seem to me that there was any significant change.
What do you guys think about the idea that Campbell brought of varying the lot sizes? I mean, we were talking a little bit about that for a while, even before we got into this design review, was that it felt a little, certainly the new site plan makes it feel a little bit more organic, but I know that one of the preliminary HCC comments was, you know, it was going to look a little bit like a development that happened overnight as opposed to something that was created over time. And I think if you were able to vary the lot sizes a little bit, it might help with that feeling of being more natural and more of a neighborhood rather than a development. What about?
I do have a question also in terms of, what is, what is your thought behind the five bedroom houses? Why do you insist that this is an integral part of the puzzle?
I mean, I think for us, there's, there's the business side of it, right? We have to make sure that we are, we end up with something that works for us at that level as well. So the five better from a marketability standpoint is important to us on that front.
Put them, put them on bigger lots.
And why, why, why is it that much more important? Can you sell those houses for that much more money than a four, four bedroom?
It's, 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 part of it is, yes, the dollar value that you can sell for, but it's also who's out in the market. So if we're hitting a narrow piece of the market as opposed to a broader piece of the market and people are looking for four and five better, which is generally who your summer resident is, it, it expands our buyer pool significantly.
Yeah, I don't have a fundamental issue with that. I think if you gave them more space.
Yeah, it's a quick pro quo. If you want more, if you want more five bedrooms, say if you're on bigger lots or fewer of them, you know, whatever, we get, we get the deal.
I get the, the method, I get that. More people are looking for a five bedroom house or a four bedroom house, sort of opens your market up to-
I don't think that's true, by the way.
Well, but it does open his market up to the possibility of four bedrooms and a gym or four, well, I guess you're having that too, but you know, just flexibility in the use, but I think that that, you know, I, I, I think the number of units and the number of bedrooms is still pretty high for this.
So let me ask you a question on that, on that front, because, you know, Park Circle, for example, which we are, on average, our whole site is about half as dense on a per bedroom, per acre basis to Park Circle, so half as dense as Park Circle, but they have a lot of three thousand and change square foot lots. And so the first house I owned on Nantucket was in Nasha and, you know, I remain good friends with my neighbor from Nasha to this day and it was just this kind of lot right here, five thousand square foot, you know, four and five bedroom homes. And I thought it was incredibly successful, I think, but that was my experience, but I lived in there anyway.
I didn't think, did Nasha have this four and five bedroom homes or more like three and four with people putting four bedroom?
Mine was a four that I lived in, but I'm not really sure.
But it's small spaces, like I think of a two house is four bedrooms, but it's not a big house.
Yeah, and I think there may be some five bedrooms in the, with the fifth bedroom in the basement that doesn't belong, but I'm not sure that they were five bedrooms to begin with there.
Well, some of our five bedrooms have a basement bedroom as well. The, the other thing, just to elaborate on what Jamie was saying with these five bedrooms, so this development is not getting subsidized. It functions within the economics of the, what's, of the pro forma. We are counting on being able to make the thing work by selling essentially twenty-seven cottages, single family cottages, in the, for more than two million dollars each. That's what makes the thing function. And so when we work with this, you know, we need to figure out what is it that we think we can sell, what allows us to hit that, that price point.
And you don't think more lot area is part of that equation?
Not very much. I mean, first of all, we, we've been doing, I mean, at Beach Plum, we've got four bedroom homes on four thousand lots in some, in some places. They do vary in size, but the average is in the five range, probably averaging about five. We don't have five bed units there, but we have four bedrooms and there are full basements that could have a fifth bedroom and-
They can't have a fifth bedroom because the bedroom count is capped.
They can't have a-
So hopefully they're not appearing over there.
They can't have a fifth bedroom legally and from the- They can't have a fifth bedroom legally and from the permit standpoint, but just in terms of the physical space.
Well, clearly, the physical space, you could fit probably ten thousand people in here if you were in New York, but that's not what we're talking about.
And, and that's not what we're talking about either.
Right.
We're not talking about high-rise development. We're talking about single-family cottages on house lots that are basically the same size as Nasha Quisit, Naushaw, Beech Plum, and other places. And the four and five-bedroom units are in there because we have to hit a price point in order to make the pro forma go. So, so that's, anyways, that's, that's the rationale. One other thing, I should...
Yeah, don't, don't interrupt.
Just one, one other thing on the four and five-bedroom units. Most of those bedrooms are empty, most of the time. There are some that get rented out and the renter, you know, gets a lot of people and they want a five-bedroom house because they need five bedrooms. And so those were, those are used very intensively. Most of the four-bedroom homes at Beech Plum are occupied by a couple for most of the summer. And there's a week when the whole family comes, and so they're happy to have the big house. But if you look at, you know, we did talk with Cliff about this, and I have to say we have not done the physical analysis at this point yet. But if you look at water usage or actual usage of those homes, by far, the overwhelming majority are a couple of people living in a four-bedroom house. And that's likely to be what most of this will be as well. So it's different from taking two-hundred-and-eighty-one bedrooms, which is what this plan works out to, and saying it's the same as two-hundred-and-eighty-one one-bedroom units, where you know there's going to be someone in every one of those, in every one of those bedrooms. Here, forty-three percent of the bedrooms, forty-three percent are in the twenty-seven market rate homes that'll mostly be empty most of the time. So that needs to be factored in.
And I just want to, on the condo side of the, you know, these numbers that we're projecting are paired with the notion of them being restricted to year-round people. And if those, if those were, if we were selling these condos to summer people, there's no doubt in my mind that we can sell them for a bigger number and therefore we could reduce the overall count in order to accommodate less program in there. But for us, it's really important that we do do this in keeping with, you know, providing year-round housing and therefore keeping at a certain price point. And so that's a major driver of the density that we need to make this work as a business. If we took that out of the equation, it would be easy. It would be really easy to satisfy, I think, most of the people at this table, but it would be twenty-five percent affordable and seventy-five percent seasonal. And that's not what we're trying to do.
Do you think the density, though, on the multi-unit, year-round units will? I mean, I bet everyone for a lot of those units because they're not going to be, you know, they're not inexpensive, I don't think, I mean, relatively speaking for having two kids that live here trying to make a living, they're not cheap.
The seasonal cottages?
No.
No, no, no.
The multi-unit buildings, the year-round.
Four fifty, seven fifty.
Yeah, that's, you know, that's still a lot of money. I mean, my daughter couldn't afford one of those, so...
That's true, because...
There'll be a lot of people renting out rooms in those places.
We're not going to let that.
The square foot...
We said we wouldn't allow it.
You're not going to let it, but...
It's going to happen. There's no way you can...
And I don't disbelieve you, but this is, it becomes an enforcement issue that I would prefer, quite frankly, see a smaller bite at the apple and not worry about enforcement issues. And if you want, because I just, it's not that, again, I don't disbelieve you. I just think it's a very difficult thing, ten years from now, to have the expectation that those rules and regs are going to be well enforced.
And I'm not even sure. I spoke with DHCD. DHCD is the state agency responsible for housing development and also responsible for the subsidized housing inventory, which I know is a particular concern here in the town. And I, I spoke with Margo Leclair. She's an attorney. She's a fair housing expert because I've been asking the applicant to give us assurance that in fact, having a year-round restriction, year-round occupancy restriction on the market condominium units or multifamily units would be acceptable to the state. She was not willing to, to offer a lot like that. I probably shouldn't be surprised. She said, "We need to check with town council." I have to follow up with town council on that. So, and she raised the argument that there could be a resident in Nantucket who spends half the year here, half the year in Florida, who really would like to downsize into one of these units and could appeal it. She didn't say that would happen. She said it could happen. I don't think the board can assume, as much as it might like the plan, to have a year-round restriction, that it can actually be implemented and enforced. And I don't think that offers license to come up with a design that is not satisfactory in your opinion. I think the design comes first. We've raised the word density. Forty-B projects, you don't talk about density for density's sake. Cliff's discussion has always been, and he, he said he's not sure, given the proposed density of a hundred and four units, whether or not you can achieve the design objectives that he feels are important. So forty-B's a trade-off. Nobody guarantees a forty-B developer that you're going to make a lot of money. You have to come up with the right system or the right plan that's acceptable. And I think there's still work to be done. And again, maybe it's a trade-off. Maybe you, you eliminate some of the single families to create larger space to create the multifamily units with a design that's more palatable to the board. I think when I take, you know, and I haven't examined the pro forma that carefully, but when I take a look at your square foot prices on the multifamily units, it looks, I think I understand the other reason why you'd like to do those multifamily buildings. So I think it might be a combination of good intention and margins. And if it's not, then you should be building probably, I, I would have expected you to be building single families, but...
That would be a lot less risk for us to do that. And it's not about the margins. I'll just say that again for the record.
I just think you want to make sure it's integrated and successful so that the whole project is successful.
So, excuse me, on the integration and all these topics we've just been discussing, I just had to run in a few things. The backdrop is, we talked about the lot size, and then the thing we didn't talk about with respect to the lot size directly is the massing. So if we use examples that we know all fairly well, Park Circle versus Satcham's Path. The lot sizes are different, the sizes, the structures are different. Satcham's Path, I think, and Park Circle are similar with respect to the fact that they're rather tall structures, they're not necessarily have a lot of additive massing. Park Circle, they're much closer together and you get this feeling, a perception of just heavy density with a lot of parking, and that's it. Satcham's Path, I think, has taken a broad, a much broader, a larger lot-size approach. Once the landscaping grow, it's funny, if you look back through the old books of town, pictures of town, you're like, what happens? There's, there's no trees, everything, it just looks like it's stuck together. And Satcham's Path is kind of like that right now. The glue that integrates it and gives it a sense of community and flow isn't there yet. Some of the hardscaping is in place, but the landscaping, the trees aren't. Then you go over to, sorry, a little divergence there. Then you compare Satcham's Path to Nasha Quisit, where I think Nasha Quisit is much more successful, and it actually deceives your eye because the lot sizes are much more similar than you would think, is the fact that they use different massings. So there's seven styles of homes, four, three of them are a formal style. There's a Main Street, a Federal, and a Gartner. And those were all derived from actually going to one of those streets and then getting inspiration on the design. And then there's the Maticet, the Scottset, and I think a Lily Street. The point of making the differentiation to you all is that those designs each, although they have a common design vocabulary, they're pulling off their heights and their masses from different areas of the island, and then they're kind of marrying them together into one community. Unlike Satcham's Path, which tends to be, and nothing against Satcham's Path, I think it's a wonderful development, it's going to be incredibly successful. That tends to be more of a vertical element because you're trying to maximize your ability to put people in houses. That's what it's about now. Park Circle is much more that vertical element tied together. So those are kind of the backdrops. With respect to the lot sizes, at Nasha Quisit, that, do you remember R1, what size that was when we had that?
Is that five thousand?
I wouldn't think so.
Five thousand.
Five thousand.
About thirty percent...
Five thousand. Okay, so that was originally, that's a fourteen-acre parcel, a little under fourteen-acre parcel that was originally R1. Grandfather redeveloped, they did a different ownership structure so that they could change the layouts of the lots. They're not really lots, they're lease areas, but I'm not going to confuse things by getting into that once it's become lots. Those lots are between forty-five hundred and six thousand square feet, pretty much. The, the vast majority are about five thousand square feet of usable landscape area with your borders growing in and filling in. Again, the success of those are the fact that they have two-bedroom to five-bedroom, no, very few in the basement. There are only, the highest structure there is twenty-eight feet tall. It's a five-bedroom, it's one of the main, it's, there's a few Main Streets there, they have five bedrooms that are twenty-eight feet tall. So the players...
Steve, I have a question on, on, that's Nasha Quisit, right?
Yes.
So it was fourteen acres?
Yeah.
Roughly forty-five to six thousand square foot lots, I like. So how many units were there?
I don't know.
Well, there's, there's ninety homes, but there's also common areas. The road, the circulation patterns are different. They use a, they use like a kidney-shaped curvature, a main road, and then some cul-de, some T-type cul-de-sacs, and then they use the secondary circulation, which is the Shell Pass. So with that information, I guess where I was going with it is back to this concept of what are the, where are the different uses? The multifamily uses, the duplexes, the single-family. How does that relate to massing? And how does it relate to layout? And I did a quick little thing here. I'm not trying to redesign your project. But if you were to take this area, I'm too shaky for that. If you were to take this area, turn it sideways and superimpose it in the area of the multi, multifamily use areas, you would get eighteen lots. If you, if I did a count based on the bedrooms of an average of five bedrooms in the duplex and an average of three bedrooms in these single-family lots, right, you would get seventy bedrooms. So you'd be eighteen bedrooms short of what you currently have in this area. The roadway could do a number of things. It could come up here as it does, and then it could parallel this and come out here. You'd have a track, you'd have a group here and a group here. That's, that's a concept on the layout. The reason it's relative is because there's, to my mind, and maybe I just don't understand, there's nothing that indicates anywhere that the condo, the form of ownership, has to be in a large multifamily unit. And there's also nothing that restricts you from using condos...
Let me just jump in on the, the, I don't mean to interrupt the flow here, but you asked about the five bedrooms and we tried to answer that. There's a, you know, good question about why do we have these large multifamily buildings? And that goes back to what Jamie was saying in terms of our desire, separate from margin, which is, doesn't work that way, to create a reasonably affordable middle-income tier of unit. We have to pay attention to what costs to build that unit. And it costs less when you can get eight units and more, four modules and an eighty-foot chunk to build it efficiently than it does when you make it into a lot smaller buildings. And so I get that the smaller buildings, the buildings are smaller, but the number of units goes way down. And the ability to accomplish the program that we're trying to accomplish is what's lost.
But let me just, let me just ask some questions about that.
It's a cost-driven thing.
Yeah, I kind of need to finish. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Because what I was going to say next addresses that.
Okay.
It may not address it to the level of satisfaction you require, and it may not be possible, but... Okay, so you've changed your layout, and you've got these relatively single-family duplex-style structure, size structures. There's nothing that, as a forty-B, there's, with no zoning to hold you back, there's nothing that prevents you from having units around the site, as Jamie had said earlier, that are actually condo forms of ownership in single-family buildings that you can sell to people who are not year-round people. Therefore, you get a much higher level of revenue, not like dramatic, but a higher revenue, level of revenue from those particular buildings to offset the cost of breaking up the multifamilies into single-family duplex-style and then selling those to year-round people on a condo model at a lower rate. So basically, you could be developing, by virtue of the way that you have, the form of ownership you have in some of the other dwellings that might otherwise have been single-family, doing them as condos, you could then underwrite and subsidize breaking up the multi-unit. I'm not suggesting it works with your numbers. I'm just saying it's a suggestion I haven't heard we, us, talk about. And I think that we may tend to get locked into, well, you can't have condos in a single-family building because it's against zoning. Well, no, it's not because this is a forty-B. So, and it doesn't increase your density. In fact, it lowers your density. It increases your circulation, and there might be some other benefits. So again, I just, throwing it out there as a creative idea, I thought that's kind of what we were working on at this point. And it seemed like we were at an impasse with, you know, this being a, if I may, a regurgitation and, and then it just seemed like we were kind of at an impasse. So I was trying to throw that out there.
If I could just add my comment, then I'll get to you. Middle income is great, but there are no income limitations here. You can make an assumption that the year-round folks who are buying those have lower incomes. And perhaps Jamie and Josh are willing to leave some money on the table in selling these at a price which Jamie is saying below market. But on resale, there's not going to be any restriction on the seller of that home other than to sell it to a year-round resident. But that has sort of no implication, no safeguards in terms of what that price might be. So again, I, I just don't want the town to say, hey, we went along with this because we think providing housing for year-round residents is very important, only to find out that that was not an achievable objective.
Yeah, if I could just respond to that. So first of all, we've got, we do have a legal opinion from Kendratus and Mustang that is nearly ready.
Send it in.
And, and we, we, we will be giving you that in terms of why we believe this is consistent with fair, fair housing law and would believe that it's something that DHCD would bless. And we recognize that as an issue. We think it can be done. And it's not, it's, it's unusual and unique in Nantucket, but I think it's something that Nantucket is going to want to get into more in some of the Colorado ski areas, for example, which have a wide variety of affordable housing styles and types and ownerships and regulations. And some are rental and some are ownership, and some are for different income groups. There's a very successful model that's being used where the resale is restricted to a local resident. And that keeps the price at a lower level. It isn't, it isn't a restricted price. It's difficult when you're selling a house for six-hundred-and-fifty or seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. At least it points out that's not cheap to say, and on top of it, it's going to be so regulated that when you get around to wanting to sell it, you're going to have trouble selling it. So it's, the restriction is, it's to a eligible Nantucket Islander buyer, but not a, not at a restricted price. And we think that that will work. And we think that that would be a very good piece of Nantucket's future affordable housing portfolio, just for what it's worth, in a place like Breckenridge, for example, with twenty-five hundred year-round homes. They have over a thousand affordable homes that are restricted in one way or another. Not, you know, in Nantucket, we've got, what, four thousand year-round? Not, you know, in Nantucket, we've got what, four thousand year round housing units? And we're at two hundred that are restricted and trying to, people are, people view the affordable housing problem, if you will, as getting to four hundred, not to get, not getting to fifteen hundred or the two thousand that we really probably need.
Right, and that's a function of strong zoning bylaws which require that.
Can we- Can I just add a little bit to that as far as the cost of the condo units?
Can I interrupt for a second because I know you're getting off on cost, but I've taken time off to be part of a design work group, and I feel like we're just justifying why we're not making any changes or doing anything different. So I don't mean to interrupt from that, but while my time may not be valuable to others, it is sort of to me. And I get where you're going with your cost thing, but I sort of feel like, like Stephen was saying, we should be here trying to be flexible, creative, and work with what your goals are, right? In maybe new and different ways, but to keep those things in mind, so I'm sorry.
It was going to be a short statement, but we've studied the economics of the condo ownership and it's very comparable to what people are paying in rent. As far as the condo fees and the maintenance that goes with homeownership, it's a very efficient way of having homeownership.
Okay.
That was-
Could you wait, he was next.
Uh, yeah.
Sorry, I don't know these names.
Josh.
I've got a couple of comments. One is, you know, my usual comment is density is too high. I do like some of the flows of plan. I'm wondering about a couple of things, lot sizes. So lot fifteen through thirty-six, which would be bottom corner going around. If you drop six of those houses out, you could probably get those lots to be, go from five to seven or a little over seven, which would maybe make them a little bit more spacious and work with the layout. Uh, the, up in the condo area, or whatever we like, all multifamily, whatevers, the two that face horizontally on the road, how come we can't drop those where the duplexes are up front and put a duplex or two there to change the massing? And change the duplex lots into those two condos there? You could go within fifty feet of the road, so you could make them a little deeper, possibly offer a little off street parking. And try that out. I don't know whether that would work or not, but it would, it would address the sort of going by these eighty foot buildings or however long they are. And there, it would put the eighty foot buildings on a shorter street, just two way. The other thing I have a problem with this is the one way flow of traffic basically from the sewer main to the sewer main. So all this, all the condos are dumping out and going all the way around the development to get back out. And it seems to me that, that a two way should be kept up to the condos so those guys at least have an option of going, going one way or the other. I just know that someone's going to be in the condo wanting to quickly get to the store for a beer and will go out to the east entrance and cut across the parking lot and go out that way.
I should have had that idea. Like, you know, you're there and you're like, yeah, but I could just go dang over there, you know?
Who's going to come by?
It's the way.
But to that, you could do one way, the other way, right? Where you come in on this lower one and come around, and that way the mass of, majority of cars would be leaving, you know? That would be a shorter.
And longer coming.
I like your idea, two way, just on a small section.
Oh, I didn't think about that.
Well, I just think it's better to give people an option, especially since condos are the most dense area that we have, is that you can get out of your parking lot and go right or left, and hopefully you choose the shortest way.
Okay. Come, oh, are you done, Sean?
Uh, let's see. So across from the condos, I mean, I find lots one through nine, they seem to be pretty appropriately sized for the buildings they're on. They seem to be a little bit more spacious. I, I have lots of, you know, once again, even if we took out the six, I have questions about density and all the things that density brings along, but when I'm looking at the plan, I see that, that maybe switching to duplexes in some of the condos, that would break up the condos a little bit and you might get one less duplex in that area. So you might be giving up a duplex lot too, I'm just not sure. Yasu, and I forgot what my other point was, but when I remember, I will bring it right.
Drainage?
Uh, you know what?
No, let's not get into drainage.
Thank you. Yeah. Come on back.
Yeah, for whatever it's worth, again, reiterating Ed's comments, Sean's comments, other people's comments, it seems that we've just taken a step back and that our statements from the last meeting weren't taken into consideration with this design plan. People have been asking me, well, what do you, what do you think is appropriate? I do want to say one thing in that when we're talking about Nasha or Nasha Quisset or some of the other five thousand square foot subdivisions, which quite frankly, I can't count them on my two hands. There's not many on this island in terms of recent ones. They're all very, very old ones, actually before subdivision zoning. The reason why maybe those work, or people feel that they work, is because they reflected the zoning of the area and the surrounding neighborhoods are similar to that zoning and blend into that zoning. Whereas we're here in a two acre zoning spot. So I don't think that this subdivision plan can be justified by other subdivisions on the island. The only way that this can be justified is because it's a forty B, plain and simple. If you go around the island in other areas that you think are dense, Essex Road, seventy-five hundred to ten thousand square feet lots. Everything off Cooper Farm Road is about the same one, seventy-five hundred to ten thousand square feet. There's a lot of areas that we think are dense, but they're not five thousand square feet. So there certainly is other opportunities to get a little higher square footage. One of some of my favorite subdivisions are cluster subdivisions, the one out in Warren's Landing, gorgeous. The ten thousand, fifteen thousand square foot lots. The ones off Ahab, Cooper Farm, they could have gone a lot lower, they chose not to. Those are about twenty thousand, thirty thousand square foot lots. I'm not saying that that would work here for what their economic desires are, but they certainly can go higher and make the subdivision a lot more appealing to the surrounding neighborhood, just not just the interior quality of life of the neighborhood. But you have to think about these neighbors and everybody else that are living in one acre, two acre zones around them.
Other comments?
I'd like to make another comment on the parking spaces at the pool and community houses being counted in as viable parking spaces. It seems to me if I'm down at the end here and I drive to the pool house, I'm taking, you know, like, those parking spaces seem to have a double use. They're being used for parking as the whole place, right? But then they're also being used as parking for a specific use in that area. The pool house and the community house, I think, are what's there. So I was just going to point that out, as I have in the past, the, I don't even want to say it's a parking issue, it's a car issue, isn't it? There, you know, that everybody has them, but I'm just saying that, let's say you're overflow, you're having guests and you're in one of these houses in this area, and you have guests and you tell them, oh, you can just park over in that area, in the common area, I guess I'll call it. But then that reduces the ability for other people in the development to utilize that space to a degree. I just felt like they were being, they should be, you know, like they're double counted.
It's interesting, I think that the parking in that community area, to me, is more than is necessary. I think that almost everybody would, who lives there, is going to walk there. And that you might stop and pick up your mail on your way home. And so there's a few spots that are needed for that.
So they have fifteen minute parking.
And you would need to have, you know, some additional for whatever, but that means, I think that that is an area, I think, where the parking should be looked at again.
So are you thinking of the Park Circle?
Excuse me?
The Park Circle pool is the-
They have interior parking.
Yeah, but it's to serve the apartments, not to serve the pool, right?
Don't believe it's dedicated, but I-
It's, there's no dedicated parking at small pools.
The only reason we would need it here, I guess, would be, sorry, was whether or not you guys had talked about this community building being a place for people that were in the condos could have parties and get together. So then you would have people probably parking, using that possibility.
In general, that's guest parking.
Right. Would you guys ever do some sort of a parking situation where you have, because I think a lot of these houses that are going to have four to five bedrooms and there are only two parking spaces attributed to each one, which I think is reasonable because that's, I suppose, is that reasonable when I think about that? That's what you get in town, I mean, you need one in town for each dwelling unit, so I suppose that's, I mean, two. But if you, well, when I was with Santa, my parents had a place, you had to get permits. And you had to have those permits in the window, and each family only got one extra permit.
Yep.
And if you didn't have a permit, somebody was policing and either towing your car or ticketing you or doing something about it so that you don't end up, because I could see if you only provide two per house, it's never going to be any place to park because you're going to have three to four cars per house if you have four to five bedrooms.
Yeah, my concern about the five bedrooms, quite frankly, is, and again, I've just stuck on this issue, is that seems like two families to me, coming down to the house to rent it. And let's go down and share a two, a five bedroom. You get a bedroom, I get a bedroom, and we split the kids up. That's, that's an intensive use that I think is very uncomfortable for this, this type of subdivision.
I think that there will be some like that, I mean, at Beach Plum, for example, which is my experience. We do have that, and there's, at any given, on any given week, there's probably three or four of the homes that we rented that way. And sometimes you do have that problem with people having more than the two cars that their, that their house, and it has to be enforced, you know, it's in the lease and you say, I'm sorry, there's only room for two cars, and, you know.
Who enforces that on the weekends? Who does enforce that?
So the owners have to enforce it, and we have a property manager that sees it, and there's permits in the window for the few people that are allowed to park overnight on the street.
We envision the property manager being there all through the high season, I mean, because of the pool and the maintenance of all the properties, landscaping, so.
I'm not saying that it isn't an issue, it is an issue and it will become an issue, but it isn't an issue times twenty-seven market rate homes. In all likelihood, it will be an issue for some minority of folks.
I'd like to go back to what Cliff said in the very beginning about trying to do something about that, this streetscape. Do you think there's some validity to that?
Yeah, so let me, let me kind of see if I can ask you guys for some feedback, because you're asking us for feedback. We're here trying to do our best, we're not here trying to stone wall. We feel like we have responded to Cliff's ideas, you know, and we adopted an awful lot of what was in that plan number three. We were very taken by the fact that the footprints of the multifamily buildings in Cliff's number three, and, you know, it's a sketch, it's not cast in concrete, and I'm not claiming that this was ratified by anybody. It was an idea that was thrown out that got some positive feedback. Footprints of what we have put here are actually less than what was in plan number three, which put most of the multifamily units in exactly this location. There were some more multifamily units in the location where we now put some duplexes. Are we saying that we would never move anything around? We would be happy to move some things around, but not to kill ourselves to find out that really at the end of the day, you've got sixty units in your mind and we're never going to get there. And, you know, at some point, we have to get to the place where we say, you know, we're all trying our best and we may just be too far apart and in such a different place that let's put ourselves out of our misery and let this thing go to the state and beyond, beyond, you know, go beyond. So I don't want to be ultimatums, I'm not trying to do any of that, but I do want us to start to get real. We haven't heard anything in a way that is as meaningful as we wish it were from you guys about what you think you ultimately could get comfortable approving.
Well, partly, go ahead. Well, because we haven't wanted to come up with an arbitrary number. That doesn't work in forty B. We told you, we've tried to explain at two meetings at least, what the design objectives are. And we've clearly said, take a look at how you can make this a continual texture, which is the word that Cliff used, and then see how many smaller multifamily buildings you could fit behind that. And I don't know if that's eighty units, I don't know if it's ninety units, but Cliff's module, if you came up with sixty units, his module was thirty units. Is there something in between? You know I've expressed my opinion in terms of the basement units and the thirty foot model. I don't think, and this is a personal subjective judgment, that those are reasonable units. And I think you're creating incredible sort of issues in terms of how the outdoor spaces work on those, the patios. And I think you're just making it very difficult. But there isn't a magic bullet number here. The board is looking for a design that makes sense.
Yeah, I wanted to say that I think when we looked at, and I don't think, do we have Cliff's option three? Oh, I was wondering if it was on the screen. I think we talked a lot about, I don't think anybody was enamored with this little layout, this, that layout of Cliff's option three from the perspective of it being, no, it's a sketch from the last meeting, I don't know if you-
It's not up there, Jerry.
It's not, okay. Anyway, but I don't think anybody was, felt like this was the solution, you know, to have two very symmetrical pods of duplexes. I think we had kind of, at least, maybe I was, we were sketching on our own or something, but the idea of having, you know, organizing the roads differently so that you could come in and have it feel a little bit more like the rest of the development. I think that's what's shocking about this, is that it doesn't feel integrated. And I thought that what we were pretty clear about last time was making it feel, those buildings feel more integrated to the whole development, and that I don't think is represented here. And that's, I think, basically what everybody is having concern with, is the integration of those multifamily units into this development so it feels less, more seamless, less separated.
I'm going to go out on a limb here and say, if yours, I don't see how you integrate those buildings at that scale into this plan. I don't think you, I just don't, I mean, you've tried. I just don't see the integration working with those scaled buildings.
I didn't think Jock's, I thought of Jock's idea of maybe putting a couple of them at the road. Even I think last time we were pretty specific about not having big buildings at the road. You know, if they're really twenty-eight feet tall, I mean, you have them at thirty now, if you make them twenty-eight and they're broken up a little bit more amassing, maybe having two of the larger buildings here as, you know, the backdrop to the road where you would have fifty foot screening makes sense.
Maybe. I still think you go with the duplex and maybe a triplex and I, if you're telling me the cost to do a duplex is fifty percent more than a quadplex, then that's one thing. But if it's five percent, you know, I think there's room.
I just think we haven't seen a lot of alternatives.
It's not fifty, it's neither, right? It's not five, it's not fifty. But it's a significant number that we need to pay attention to.
Well, but there are other, there are, I mean, maybe there's other creative ways to do something here. You have wood roofs on every one of these buildings, including the condominium, the multifamily units. Well, but there are other, there are, I mean, maybe there's other creative ways to do something here. You have wood roofs on every one of these buildings, including the condominium, the multifamily units. You don't have to have cedar roofs.
I, 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 I think we, if that's the, if that's, I, no, I think that we actually don't want to have cedar on the condo buildings.
But that's not what was presented to us. So all of a sudden, now they're not part of it?
Well, we're, we're still ongoing here, right? And we're trying to evolve and to be responsive. I mean, this plan for me is not my favorite plan, right? And we're trying to be responsive to you guys in a way that still works for us, you can.
Right. And I think you were responsive to a lot of it.
But let, let, let's take, I don't know that we can do this, Lisa, but let's say we take Jacques' idea, okay? And we get some duplexes in the streetscape so that as you come along, come around, you don't see the four larger multifamily buildings.
Well, eight buildings.
Maybe you see one end, a gable end of one, and maybe there's a couple of, this one, and maybe there's a couple of duplexes, or duplex, and a triplex, and another duplex, or something like that, so that you come along like that. And the larger ones are in the back that you don't see as well. And maybe we can do something with the parking and the.
Right.
And all of that stuff, but, and, and we make up for it down in this area somehow.
I don't know where you're coming, but, yeah.
Is that the kind of thing that's getting us into the zone, or is that the kind of thing where people say, well, you're just making such modest, minor marginal changes that you're not changing enough? We, we are resistant, again, because of the, the, the tyranny of the, of the high-priced, single-family cottages, without which we don't have a development that works, to spread everything around so that now that two million dollar plus, single-family cottage is next to something that people say, well, I don't wanna be next to that one. And so you can't charge as much, and so your pro forma starts to fall apart. I get the integration. I think we can do, I think we have done some stuff, and maybe we can do some more stuff. We're not gonna totally mix it, because it's gonna destroy the value of the single-family cottages. And it's not gonna work.
But what about if you just took, yeah, if you did the duplexes along the road or something of a, a different scale, and you kept, again, we don't even really know what these multifamily buildings look like.
Having duplexes or triplex, having duplexes or triplexes along the road, I think will enhance the value of your single families.
Right.
As opposed to the, the segregated condo unit? I mean, giant buildings, a hundred percent. I don't, I think that you're gonna do better.
So I think there's a plus there for you.
I mean, obviously, we have a fundamental, I think it, you, you think it works one way, we think it works another way, but I don't, I don't see this as a selling point when you're coming through this subdivision to say, oh, I have to go buy the multifamily dwelling area. Which I'm sure you would do well. It would look nice ultimately, 'cause, you know, through this process, hopefully, but, yeah, I don't know. I, I, I see that as, as a problematic selling point myself, as opposed to, oh, my house, my summer house is next to a duplex. Anyway, I, I, I tend to agree with you that we're getting to a point where, and I'm not throwing out an ultimatum either, but, yeah, we might be getting to the point that we just, it's too far apart.
I, I just wanna say, I mean, I, again, I don't know what the right answer is on the configuration and so forth, but just, I mean, I mean, I think you remember, Josh, that when the undersecretary of DHCD came down a couple of years ago, I think one of the things that she found very attractive and interesting about Beach Farm Village was the fact that affordable units at the two hundreds were selling next door or across the street from units at two million dollars. So I just don't think that the affordables necessarily are negatively impacting things.
Well, they can't, they can't negatively impact, because you have to have, you're right, there's, twenty-five percent of the single-family houses have to be affordable, so you're going to be next to a two-point-one million dollar house no matter what.
Correct.
You can't segregate those, so.
And we ha, and we haven't, and we are comfortable with that, and we do that, and we see that, and there are people who come and say, I'm not gonna buy that house, because there's an affordable house next door, and they figure it out, and they go away.
Yeah.
Not many, but enough, you know, there are some like that, but for the most part, we've established, I think, as a major resource, by the way, for the whole island, the fact that you can sell at a pretty good price, a market rate home, in a mixed-income development. That's a plus for the whole island. I'm talking about not the affordable part. These are the market rate year-round, you know, larger format buildings, and that's a little different, I think.
Yeah. No, I agree. I, I think the difference is, though, is that are those larger format multi-unit buildings going to destroy the character of the neighborhood, making those two million dollar pieces no longer that valuable?
And that's, and that's exactly what we're trying to find, some kind of a sweet spot that we're reasonably satisfied that we think will work.
Yeah, I, well, I, I have to say, we're not saying that this isn't, I don't think that's it, though.
Well, yeah, it's getting away from the big building.
Yeah.
And I thought, I thought I heard Josh say.
Yep.
That you were gonna take a look at doing duplexes or triplexes along that road and see what you could do.
But, but, and, and I'm, I'm interested in doing that, but I would like to get some sense, and obviously, you know, I'm not looking for anybody to make any permanent commitments to anything. But if we make those relatively modest moves along the lines of what Jacques has suggested, where are we gonna be? Are we gonna be kind of like, okay, now we've moved, you know, ten percent towards something that we need? And, you know, once you get rid of all the rest of the big buildings, we'll be okay. Because that's where, and that's where the whole thing starts to be so interactive. You don't have the big buildings. Now you've got too high a cost structure to accomplish our middle-income, year-round unit program, which is a mission-driven program despite some people's view that it's a money-driven program. And so that's where we're stuck. We have known from the beginning that if this was all single-family cottages, one quarter forty B affordable, three quarters market rate, we would, we probably wouldn't be having this conversation. It would have been done a long time ago.
Well, it, speaking of your point, and I'm not gonna blurt out a number, it's sort of like, everybody wants to know the ballpark price of a building. It can be, you know, everywhere. But anyway, having said, and it sticks, the minute you say the number, it's stuck. I, I think that if you were to basically lay this out as a five thousand square foot lot subdivision, you're gonna get X number of lots, whatever that is, you then multiply that by, well, that's arguably some sort of unit count. And then maybe there's some bump, some quid pro quo for the fact that you are providing a different type of, of homeownership opportunity here. Is that bump, you know, forty units? I don't think so. But again, so. Don't, don't, don't stick, forget, forget the number forty. That was just, that just came out.
I get how hard this is, and I'm not, I'm really not trying to.
So that's why I'm, I'm just trying to be honest here. I don't, the bump isn't that, it, it's not as big as you think it is.
But it doesn't have to be. If you take what Steph has said, okay, which is Natchitoches, fourteen acres, not thirteen and a half acres, which is what we are here, ninety homes, probably average size, three and a half bedrooms, three hundred and fifteen bedrooms in Natchitoches. Our plan with a hundred and four units in this configuration is two hundred and eighty-one. I'm not looking for a bump.
Okay, well, then my problem with that.
That's, that's, that's thirty-five bedrooms less than what everybody says is a very successful development.
My problem with it, Josh, is just because. Just so, because something was built, I don't know, how many years ago was Natchitoches, twenty-five years, thirty years ago?
I'm just picking on the thing that everybody says they like.
Uh, but Nantucket is a different place than it is now, was then. It's more crowded, there's more traffic, there's more concern about water quality. You know, it's a different place. So just because Park Circle was, you know, crammed in with paving everywhere, doesn't mean I wanna be part of replicating that.
I get that, and once the town has its, once the town has its required number of affordable units on the shy list, you won't have to have them anymore. But until then, the town is going to be, I think, very hard-pressed to say that we are holding this forty B to a different standard than what is viewed as an extremely successful development that's been in place for thirty-five years and that, you know, has more bedrooms per.
Well, again, and, and as you alluded to, I believe that was, what are those? There's some sort of, I, I don't wanna be doing that.
Yeah, can I, may I?
Yes.
Okay, so, can I ask a question? First of all, Natchitoches is a successful community, because it's a successful community, but they still have issues with parking and noise. You're gonna have the same issues. Parking can be addressed through this. I just wanted, but the Natchitoches thing is, as you've said, it, it was for then. It was built based on the desires, it was designed based on those desires. I was simply using those examples, because we have a situation where we have a forty B that's gonna get, something is probably gonna approve one way or the other, and we're trying to, I'm trying to associate it with, with things we know, and then value them relative to one another to come up with an idea of what might work, which is what I thought we were doing here. Along the lines of that, how many bedrooms are you currently proposing overall?
Two hundred and eighty-one.
Okay. And how many do you need to have it work?
It's not about bedroom count.
Well, I mean, is.
Well, this, this works. This is what we're proposing.
And how many bed, your two eighty-one?
It'll fall apart if we lose one bedroom.
Your two eighty-one at this?
Yeah.
So I'm not afraid to put a number on the wall, 'cause, I mean, I have a vested interest as a member of the community, but I think it seems to me like there needs to be something to talk, I, I get what the applicant's saying. The applicant's saying, hey, we're kind of talking around a central issue for us as a developer. We need to know what your counts are in order to put this together. And obviously, you all are in a position where that's not your determining criteria. So I understand that. But if you were to do, I mean, this is, this layout has no bonuses. This is the layout I talked about before. I have no pride of authorship. I'm just trying to get some discussion going about what might look right and what might work. And what this is, is if you were to do.
Can you, can you sketch that in someplace so that I can see what you mean? Say, I know you have something.
He's got it right up here.
Oh, you can't see it. Up on that, the line show. So basically, you're doing, you're taking the concepts that were discussed here at the meeting, which is to move the duplexes around, break up the multifamily units, develop, once, what, I'm sorry.
Take a picture of it and send it to Eleanor, she can come up.
No, he can, no, I can't.
I think most people can see this.
Yeah, we got it.
Yeah, I, I'm not gonna be up here long, trust me. I just, I just, I would go home and feel badly if everything started to fall apart and I didn't stand up and at least say this piece. And this may go nowhere, and it may go somewhere, I don't know, but I'm gonna say. If you were to do this, you centralize your duplexes here. You can do the design elements in such a way that it, they don't look like duplexes. Some of them may actually be freestanding units. Your roadway can conform to parallel this roadway. These could be single-family units that are actually individual unit, you could do two-unit condos. So by breaking up these big buildings, the cost goes up to build. But these units could be two-unit condos. There could be a driveway access to one side of the condo from this road, and a driveway access and parking from this side. So you actually create a sense that it's almost like a mini duplex, and therefore the value goes up, and those don't necessarily have to be sold to year-rounders. You haven't increased your density at all. You've changed your ownership model to some extent by making the condos a little more lucrative that are free market to offset the cost of doing duplexes instead of the large multifamily.
That's fifty-six units.
This is a, this is, this would be, as laid out, it's fifty-five. I, and this isn't, I think there's a lot of room, because these, intentionally, these footprints are oversized in my sketch relative to the others. So I think you might be able to get fifty, fifty-eight maybe units out of, lots out of this. Currently, it's showing this to be a hundred and eighty-eight bedrooms. That's based on a three and a half per, three and a half bedrooms per lot average. If you up that in some areas, you could get up closer to, you know, two hundred. It's much less than you had suggested you need or you're currently targeting. I'm just trying to put something out there as a, a design element we can be talking about, and.
Well, it's helpful to, to chunk these things out into some areas, and so it's interesting to see what, you kind of took this area that is the larger building, multifamily, redrew a roadway, and put in a lot of duplexes, and you thought, you, you know, I think what you said is that that gets you fifty-six units, or fifty-eight units in that area, which is what's already in that area, pretty much.
Well, on your multifamily count, that area, this area of development, if you were just to, this is a difference between eighty-eight, if you were to do this layout, the difference is eighteen less bedrooms. Seventy bedrooms versus eighty-eight.
No, but they had a hundred and four bedrooms.
No, they had a hundred and four bedrooms.
You're looking at the wrong, they have a list, Steve, that was in the packet. They said a hundred and four.
Oh, okay.
But anyway.
Man.
Well, the total, the total bedroom count across the whole thing would be a hundred and eighty-eight, basically, based on this, with only fifty-five units.
I think that's a good example, though, of the scale of the architecture that I think people would be much happier with.
Yeah, which is what I was driving at.
So, and to me, I was gonna say, it's not about the number of buildings. It's about the character of the architecture and the, and the scale of the buildings. It's not about, you know, you have to have a hundred and five units, or a hundred and five bedrooms.
Right.
It's just about how it presents itself, or how, how it works for the development.
Yes and no.
And the parking.
I mean, you can't, you, even if the buildings are beautiful, small, little tiny buildings that have.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm assuming there'll be some drop-off of this number. You're saying.
Let's, let's not, yeah, go crazy. Just be, cause they look good.
Are you wanting to come back with three hundred and fifty?
I don't, no.
I would defer it to you now, in terms of next steps, unless there's more dis, more discussion. I, I, to me, I think it's, I think the design objectives have been stated clearly in terms of what would be more palatable to everybody here. I think there's a pretty strong consensus within the comments. And I think now the question is, is the next step, are you willing to look at another plan, to come up with another plan? Primarily, I think, for this area, unless other changes make it more likely that you can achieve the design objectives that have been stated, do we have another work session? Do you sort of do it, send it to us, and the ZBA decides whether or not another work session is merited? Up to you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm all for continuing with whatever momentum we have, which doesn't feel like a lot, but.
Let, let me try and ask my bumbled question a little bit again.
Go ahead.
Hopefully, a little clearer. So I don't think we are interested in doing a plan that is radically different in terms of program, number of units, number of bedrooms, et cetera. I know you're not, you don't care about bedrooms and units. You care about overall, does it work and density? I think we could make some adjustments that would address the question about the streetscape and the scale along the streetscape in a way that is reasonably consistent with the program and pro forma that we feel we need and want in terms of our proposal. But I, 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 I don't know that that's gonna be, it, it's not gonna take a two hundred and eighty-one bedroom development down to a hundred and eighty-eight bedrooms. And so if that's kind of, not, not that you're picking a number, not that it's forty, not that it's one eighty, not that it's anything, but if it's like a big chunk less, we probably.
Yeah, that's totally fair, by the way, and that is.
We probably aren't gonna get that. You're a good guy. I'm not trying to be, to, to make any of this personal. This has been a very difficult process. It's in a huge political fishbowl, and it just may be the kind of thing that can't get worked out locally.
Yeah, what, just out of curiosity, what did happen to the eighty-eight unit?
We stopped, we stopped talking about it, 'cause it kind of got panned. We thought, we thought, we put it out there as an idea of, is there any interest? And basically, people said, no, that's, that's a weaker.
Could you elaborate on the eighty-eight unit?
Just hold on one second. So we, somehow you got the message that we thought going from a hundred to a hundred and four was better than eighty-eight.
No, I didn't think you would like that either, but we did.
Just wanted to be clear.
We did change four single-family lots into duplex lots, and that meant that there were now two units in each of those lots.
I, obviously, less is better, I think, for us. I mean, I, do I think that, do I have a number, let's say, even under two hundred in mind? No. I think that's, that's unreasonable. No, I think that's, that's unreasonable at, at our end. Is it two, two-seventy-nine? No, so, I mean, and again, without me giving a number that I have in mind, which I don't think is fair.
I'm not asking for a number, and it could be that the, the design moves that you're talking about and that I'm trying to make turn out to be, or that we are trying to make, excuse me, are, 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 turn out to be not feasible from a pro forma standpoint. But, you know, if we could do something with the scale along this loop road where there are now four large buildings, two of which are four modules, two of which are three modules, and instead, say, there's two that are three and two that are two, something like that. And we make up for it some other place, maybe by some additional intensity in the area around the duplexes. You know, I'm prob, we're probably able to do that within more or less a pro forma that's stills working and doesn't, you know... But I, I have no idea.
Well, again...
My guess, my gut is that, that while you will recognize that as us trying to do something, it's kind of, could very well be that what you say is, I'm sorry, it's just nowhere near what we're looking for.
Well, nobody has a crystal ball, I hate to interrupt, but the back and forth between two people when you have an entire room seems to be a lot like a public hearing. So, my, my thing on your units, like, nobody has a crystal ball, nobody can see, well, if I do this, is, is everybody going to like it? You know, sometimes you don't really know until you give it a shot, right? Until you, I mean, you can sit with tracing paper over this, or something like this, or one of your people can, and start to work like Stephen did on how, like I was saying earlier, on how you can take your pieces and sort of shuffle them around or break them up. But I don't think that you can look at something and go, yeah, I see where that'll work, until you actually start trying it. So I feel a lot of resistance from you in even trying. Like, okay, I see where you've taken what you wanted, and you've applied it to what was provided here, which everyone seemed to give some very good feedback on that number three, right? Last time, everyone, like that. And so, that's really lovely, but when you look at the sketch, the sketch, I believe, had eighty-eight units or eighty-eight lots or eighty-eight things. Some, fifty-two modules, sorry, my...
Fifty condos, ninety-six condos.
Yeah, so, I mean, that was eighty-eight, so we were sort of, when we left here last time, we were sort of looking at things, you know, in the, maybe ninety to a hundred, and we seemed to have gotten a good site plan, a good base, and superimposed the original idea on it, right? Which is good, but it's not very creative. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't, you know, I just think you have to give it a shot, you know, to just play with some paper and try and see what you can do.
Having said that, which I think is a great point, but these guys have to get a vote at, at some point. How do you feel? Do you wanna have another work session where we are scribbling on paper, fooling around, just spitballing ideas?
Where you can scribble, or...
Yeah.
There's a whiteboard?
A, a whiteboard, something like that?
Roll on something.
No, sort of a charrette idea? Does that make any sense?
Three thirty right now, what time do they need to be on their book? Because I think we can do that right now.
Get some trace paper?
Okay, let's do it.
Four thirty-five, let's do it.
Is there, is there any point for myself and the people that have really expressed concern about the amount of lots and the need for more open space? Should we even be part of the discussion? Because it seems like they're just...
What do you think we're talking about right now?
Well, I was trying to come up with a plan and creating a little bit more open space.
If you're going that way, that's great. It seems that Josh was only concerned about changing the facade of that one street.
Look, we have a program.
Yeah.
The program's not gonna change that.
Yeah, let's, let's do things in a positive manner.
Well, it might change.
And...
Don't say it's not gonna change, you don't know what we're talking about.
If it's not gonna change...
I didn't, I, I'm talking about the number of units that we, we have a business plan that has to work.
So, you're saying you can't do it below the two eighty-one bedrooms?
Okay, well, then that's sort of, if you're saying...
Then we shouldn't...
Yeah, if you're saying right now, your number is your number, it's a hundred and four and two eighty-one, and you don't have any interest in looking at that, then I have a lot of other things to do in life, and so...
Is, is the goal to figure out how to change the streetscape and to make this work in a way that, you know, or is it just to reduce the number of units?
No, to me, as I said, it's not about the number, I mean, to a certain degree, it is about the number of units. But I wasn't necessarily last time saying it had to be, you know, eighty-eight units. I think it's more about how you implement a design that works and see what comes out of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm all for it.
Okay, I just do wanna say that that's not a work group, but that's you two representing the board with the applicant, and so...
I'm happy to walk out of the room and somebody else can do the scribbling, because...
Because they're not gonna, they're not, they're not meaning us anywhere near in terms of reducing stuff and increasing the open space in the buffers. So, I just wanna say that, make that known, if this, if this proceeds the way you guys want it to proceed, great.
Can I ask a question about the number of units? I asked you about the eighty-eight.
I just wanna say, I agree with what Cormac's saying, and we keep hearing all these comparisons about Park Circle and Nashoff and National Quisit, but really, this is a dead-end road, you know, we have one form of egress, you know, it's just a dead-end road, so, I mean, that's, like, so it's a, just a different, it's a completely different line from those other, you know, developments, so I just think that everything should be taken into consideration, not just, you know...
Well, I think what we're trying to hear is make it a better, doing a designing, but there are still other issues too that still have to be discussed, right?
A hundred percent, but if we could get to a design that was reasonable, that everybody thought was reasonable, then we would get into the other things.
Right.
I don't think we're quite there on the reasonable design.
Can I ask a question about bedroom units again? The eighty-eight number, where did that come from?
Hasn't that been due to bedrooms?
It wasn't bedrooms.
It was all units. It was a sketch plan.
This is a sketch.
Sketch number three from last week.
Okay, thank you, okay, so that's, okay, thank you, so that's one question, that's, I, I knew I had eighty-eight in my head. How many bedrooms?
I'm sorry, there, there was also a sketch plan submitted by the applicant for eighty-eight units.
Eighty-eight bedroom units or eighty-eight lots?
Eighty-eight units.
And then with respect to what you submitted today, because I didn't get through the colored version of the chart, how many bedrooms are in the, are in totality with the exception of the multifamily?
It's sixteen plus, what is that?
Yeah, so the, the multifamily has a hundred and four bedrooms and fifty-six units. The duplexes have...
Sixty units, Josh.
Sixty units, a hundred and four bedrooms.
Hundred and four bedrooms. The duplexes, so there's, there's eight units in four duplexes.
All three bedrooms.
All three bedrooms, there's twenty-four units there, and then of the remaining thirty-six.
I didn't realize I was doing math here, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're the one that was asking.
No, yeah, I, I just thought you had told them.
It's in the packet.
I made a chart in the packet. Eight plus nine, thirty-four, thirty-six, forty-five, fifty-three.
There's fifty-three.
Including the duplexes.
In the single family?
No, and duplexes.
And the duplexes.
Single families are forty-five.
And there's a hundred and four. Okay, thank you. Um, the other question, or it's actually kind of, I mean, it's a quasi-statement question. My understanding of this process is that if something doesn't get worked out, this goes to the state, and the state decides, and the state's track record is that they decide what the developer turned in with a couple adjustments. So I'm not here to negotiate on behalf of the state.
Not necessarily.
Okay, so please, I wanna understand that because that's where I was...
We're not, we're not there, that's not the purpose of this work group. I mean, if you want Ed to talk to you about the ins and outs of forty B, we'll go there, but not, not right now, because...
I was just trying to respond to, there seems to be a division within the work group of, well, there's no movement, and there's some, and there may be some movement, there's no movement, and where do we go from here? I was just trying to understand what our baseline was. I wasn't asking for a, a white paper on the forty B or anything.
If, if Jamie's inflexible in terms of the number of units and number of bedrooms, I'm not sure how likely it is to come up with a design that addresses the concerns that have been expressed. There has to be, it may be possible, but there has to be some flexibility. And if you are saying, no, it's a hundred and four units, two hundred and eighty-one bedrooms, then this could be a futile effort. And nobody wants to spend more time.
Yeah, so first of all, it's not Jamie being inflexible, it's, it's, it's us knowing that we spend a lot of time focused on the pro forma and the business plan piece of this. And that we understand that we're kind of at the threshold of what would work from that perspective. And so, you know, if, as we've said, it requires a big move from where we are, that would, that would have a significant effect on the pro forma, then, yeah, we probably, you know, are gonna have too much daylight.
But, but it seems to me, it's still worth the effort to see if you can come up with a plan that's mutually satisfactory.
Because didn't you just submit a plan that had eighty-eight units?
No, we didn't sort of plan, you did, you said, I thought it was just a narrative.
No, it was just a sketch, it was sketch ten or eleven.
Forty-eight single-family lots, and I think it was...
And forty, about forty condos.
So you went down in unit size, so at one point...
We went way up in single-family, which is kind of moving away from, from the year-round percentage that we're hoping to achieve.
Maybe that's not...
Varies a little bit, maybe your year-round percentage is too high.
I mean, we could fundable lots.
That's why we submitted that.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, that's, so maybe the unit size, the unit count, you were willing to adjust because you came in with a plan with less units.
We, we thought that there would be, I was surprised that we got what we thought.
I think, Josh, I think our reaction to that frankly was, I don't remember perfectly, but I think it was more sort of the, the way he presented it is, we'll do this if you give us more five bedrooms. It was, and so it was a little bit of a presentation issue.
We were saying, we, we, we weren't saying more five bedrooms, we were saying we need the five bedrooms.
So I, I don't think it was ever, ever discussed at the ZBA level to say he hated that idea.
What happened was we came in at a time when the idea that was kind of your next step was, let's do a design workup, and so I don't know that it really got...
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, maybe, I just thought it was pretty clear last time that we were excited about the idea that there were less units, but we weren't saying specifically that you had to go to eighty-eight, that the density might fall off based on a better design.
Yeah.
And then the density didn't fall off, and we didn't get a good design.
We weren't too sure what to make of it, and we, we, we kind of liked, we liked what Cliff...
So we're hoping for something maybe a little bit, a little bit more, but I think, I think there's possibility.
I think it would be worth trying to, and I, I, I still think it would be worth trying to see what we could do. I don't know what the right process is. I think that maybe if we had Chris, Dalmas, and Cliff engaged in somehow, uh, working with us, trying to see about moving some of these different basic building types to address the streetscape.
See, can I see your thing for a second? What about, what about this? I mean, because we don't have a white, well, we do have a whiteboard.
Can I make a comment on that just so, because I'm using words that you guys might be using differently. Lots, clearly lots, like units, like, I'm, I'm referring to the fifty-five lots, but some of them have duplexes, some of them... So just to be clear that I'm using numbers that may be more in terms of what you need to accomplish.
I think we've all sketched something like this at this part of the tape. This is Cliff's. I've done something like, Lisa's done something like this. These are smaller lots, smaller buildings, it's still segregated if you insist on doing it, that's at your risk, in my opinion, but I don't, I don't see the negative of that. Other than the cost potentially, but you, you know, if you, I guess if, if at the end of the day, you wanna hang your hat on it ruins our whole pro forma, and we have to go into a pro forma battle, that's what will happen, but I, I think it's worth exploring. Have you explored the numbers in this regard?
I mean, I just seeing it there, no, we have not.
Well, that's the kind of, yeah.
But that's the kind of...
That's the thing that we're hoping would be coming out of this design process.
And so, we should and we will, but we don't wanna be misleading anybody, that's all. And we've got the cost structure and the program.
We don't feel like you're misleading us. Or I don't. This is a process, and I think many of us would like to see, um, get to closure at some point soon.
Yeah, no, I, I think we all do wanna do that, and, and it could be that, you know, as we get closer to talking the same language, that we kind of just all say, I'm sorry.
Well, let's not go there, let, let's, I think, again, there was some consensus, I don't know about Cormac, I don't know about anybody else in the room, it doesn't address more open space, it doesn't address bigger buffer. I, I personally think the twenty-five-foot buffer is okay, I'll just throw that out there.
Thirty would be better.
What's that?
Thirty would be better.
A hundred would be better.
No, no, I mean...
Yeah, but they would be a lot of...
No.
That's why we're looking for bigger buffers.
Keeping it woods would be better, we guess.
Yeah, okay, let's not go there, we don't have to address that. But some, some notion of this type of plan that takes care of the integration issue, it, it, it reduce, it's gonna reduce it just by virtue of the building sizes. So the intensity of usage of this particular piece of property in a two-acre zone is going to be slightly more in keeping with what is gonna be...
We're gonna, we're gonna look at that and see whether we can get...
May I have that? I should probably send it around to everybody since we're in the discussion.
Yeah, and we're gonna, we're gonna do that in advance of the eleventh.
Get a tiny one if that's...
Oh, yes, it's...
We're just gonna surprise you on the eleventh, and if we feel like we've got something that we're talking about some more, we'll reach out to you and see whether you wanna somehow engage in advance of the eleventh, although I don't know how, that's not very...
Is it twenty-first or...
Twenty-second.
Well, do we wanna try to do this again?
It's, it's difficult.
He, he didn't make a bunch of scary notes on this.
Is there any point in, like, the idea of reducing the size of the multifamily buildings in scale just a little, a bit more? So they look like, they don't look like they're four times the size of a single-family house in this development? They're, they're, they're big. Footprint, like a figure ground study, as Cliff was mentioning, would show you that those footprints are quite a bit larger than the single-family dwelling units in scale. Would there be something that was maybe a little smaller than those that addressed some of our concerns but still met part of your development direction?
Can it be a combination? So we, you know, really focus on the streetscape as, you know, as we come on the highway and put the larger units behind it on the ends?
Potentially, but I still think it has to do with the aesthetics of those buildings.
Yeah, and I, I put...
And how they fit with everything else to make it successful from even a financial perspective from your part. Because to your point, this guy in the greenhouse here, that, that's, that's not gonna live there.
That guy in the corner?
Yeah, so unless those buildings are better designed and they dress the street better and have a better quality about them, that house is, you know, not gonna sell for two million dollars, and I get that. So that's how you need to look at it as trying to integrate your financial goals with how to design buildings so that they are more palatable to their neighbors and still meet your...
No, but as far as, but as far as the efficiency and scale, you know, working on some of them, not all of them.
All right, so back, back, because we have to begin to think about wrapping this up in the process. So, are we interested in a charrette idea of everybody scribbling, or, because I don't think we have time to that.
Yeah, I think...
I think you get it.
We had, we had a, we had a session that was very helpful one time with Cliff, uh, three days after the last, last session. A lot of us are in favor, Jamie can come over, we can do another one of those, I think that maybe could get somewhere. Obviously, nobody's got decision-making authority in a situation like that, but we could...
Well, I just didn't wanna waste anybody's time from the perspective of, if, as a board, we have some strong thoughts that Cliff, and, and we can maybe just talk to Cliff about it just so that we don't get to the point where we get a plan like today and be disappointed by it.
Well, and it could be that it's gonna disappoint again.
It could be, but then maybe that's...
We are gonna, we are gonna try, and then we'll see what, whether it flies.
I was hoping another session, maybe get it over with, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, a couple of all parents. Maybe another work session would make sense, but...
I would suggest that there'd be a meeting with the architects, give them a little room to get creative in, and do that sooner rather than later. Send it to, submit it officially to Eleanor for distribution to the board.
To the full board, yeah.
To the full board. There's, the next public hearing is the eleventh. To the full board. There's, the next public hearing is the eleventh. And if it looks, well, I think you and Lisa could give some feedback on the design that's submitted.
Well, the other thing is, I mean, quite frankly-
The other one is to have another-
In today's world, you can do all this remotely too. I mean, I, you can sit there on a computer. If you have a, scribble on a computer.
Let's say you've got something that when we send it to you, you say, this is worth talking about. Let's figure out how to talk about it.
It's certainly easier if you guys schedule a meeting in Cambridge without having to have it in this forum.
Yeah, I don't think we actually can participate unless it's done properly, in terms of the public.
Getting a room and everything else is such a nightmare, so.
How soon do you think you could be?
It's gotta be like thirty, pretty quick. I'm actually going away on Wednesday.
Oh, that's pretty quick.
Well, then you might wanna do it on a webex.
Yeah, I'd probably be doing it by webex myself.
Well, I would make, can I make one question? I think that something that happened when you took that sketch that I did that was with a very fuzzy pencil and then hardlined it, you know, I presume you used your civil engineer too, did he, he worked on it too? So, I think all I would suggest, because I do think that it's likely, in order to get to a point that I think is gonna make everybody happy, that I think you might lose some units. So, I think that getting to that point of having hardlined enough drawings so you can start to get a grip of what world you're working in in order to fix the issues that are associated with, with that plan, that would help. Because it, I, I think, it's just my own thoughts. I think thinking about that territory and I, I'm thinking that it probably does involve the, the other part of that plan that stands out so much. It isn't just the size of the building. It's also reverting back to the parking field as opposed to, you know, street integrated parking. So, there are a number of things that make it really stand out graphically in that plan. So, I'm guessing that by the time you fix those graphics, which actually are ultimately the design of the, of the program, that by the time you get there, I'm guessing you're going to lose some units. So, I think it's important to think about that because I'm almost sure that's where it would come out. Now, that's independent from the, any discussion about locating a bigger building on the, on the east side of the site or... But that's all I'm saying is I don't wanna drag it out if, if everybody kind of thinks that everybody's gonna be happier if it's fewer units and you have less multi, you know, larger multifamily kind of aesthetic.
I mean, we, we get that that's, that that's always been the nub of us and it still is. And the question is, can we get to a place where we can probably not be happy, but everybody can live with it?
Well, that's often the way it goes in forty Bs. But I, I wanna go back to one point that, that Ed, the closest Ed here, made, which was that the retaining value of all of the homes. And I think the best assurance of that is going to be through a scheme that is pretty seamless where the transitions throughout the site are relatively seamless so that people aren't really feeling like there's any bad reason to be living to one type of home versus another type of home.
Right, maybe your pro forma bumps up fifty on the, because you've made the lots actually bigger.
Yeah, I think that's for real. I think that's kind of for real, especially given that you're talking about dispersing full, all-year-round residents more throughout the site. It changes kind of the way people live on the site. And, and I forget who mentioned it also, about, you know, permanent residents probably want more space around their homes. And to the degree that they are dispersed throughout the development, they kind of effectively do pick up more space. And, you know, when they're down season time, they kind of effectively do have more space. So, that's all I'm saying is I think, I think that's just where you're gonna end up. By the time you get rid of a parking field and create some smaller building types, you're probably gonna lose some units. And I think getting to that point sooner, I think, will be a quicker path to resolution.
What's your schedule?
Horrible, because I'm going away too next week, so.
You have any time on your Tuesday, by any chance?
If we could do another one of those real end-of-day, like end-of-day Tuesday, like four-thirty, something like that.
I, I can't, I have HTC that night.
Let's see.
I can go end of the day Monday if that's possible.
There they, I lost already. Well, we have a midday Wednesday, like noon on Wednesday, the twenty-seventh.
Jack, you wanna say something?
Yeah, so, are we giving up on lots fifteen through thirty-six maybe coming here? Have we decided to?
I don't think we're giving up on anything yet. We're not, we're hoping to see another revised plan, if I'm sure.
How about Tuesday morning?
Me too.
Would that work for you?
Tuesday morning?
Tuesdays, I can do early, morning.
I can't. I, 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 I'm, early, early. I've gotta be someplace at ten o'clock.
All right, seven-thirty.
Seven-thirty?
Yeah, Tuesday, twenty-sixth.
Before we break, someone so kindly handed me these. I'll get them back. Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Seven-thirty.
Davis Square.
How about our office, because we just have a lot more materials there?
We're in Davis Square.
Yeah.
We have party. Okay.
So, exactly without a signature.
Do we have to adjourn per site?
Chris, Jamie, Doc?
I suppose so, but, uh, thank people for coming.
All right, thank you, everybody, for coming and hopefully we'll see something and we'll talk about it at March, at the March eleventh meeting.
So, that's the next thing where-
That's the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Public hearing.
So, that's where we, I mean, because I think going to those, so.
Well, is that, that's the next forty B?
Forty B public hearing.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Because they're, they're-